If I could get everyone's attention, it's 7:15, we are starting our public hearing. Just to let you know, we've had our pledge of allegiance earlier at our first meeting, so we will be foregoing that formality this time. I am going to read the notice. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 20, 2020. I don't know if you can hear me or not, because I don't have my mic on, so let me try again. Sorry about that. All right, "The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 20, 2020, beginning at 7:15 PM at the Newton Town Hall, 2 Town Hall Road, Newton, New Hampshire, for the following. In accordance with RSA 32:5, notice is hereby given to all residents of Newton, New Hampshire, that a public hearing for the purpose of gathering public input on the proposed 2020 town budget and warrant articles will be held on Monday, January 20, 2020, at the Newton Town Hall, starting at 7:15 PM. Snow date is Tuesday, which we don't have to worry about, because there is no falling. The public is encouraged to attend." Nancy, did we make copies of this available, or do we have it to put on the screen, or people are just going to li-
Copy of what?
Of the warrant articles.
Yes, I'll write there.
Perfect, I just wanted to make sure. Could I get a hard copy of that, please?
Yep, right in your book.
All right, now, I did make a Facebook post to let people know ahead of time, but in case you are not on Facebook, I will advise you that the Board of Selectmen will only be discussing the warrant articles that they have the power to modify and recommend or not recommend. That means we will not be discussing the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. The first five warrant articles, because those are election of officers and planning board warrant articles, since the planning board has already held their public hearing, which allowed for public input on those warrant articles. So we will start with article number six. And to save my voice, we're going to have each of us go down the line and read one article at a time, discuss it. Kate, would you like to be the first one?
Sure. So can you hear me?
Good.
Okay. "Shall the town of Newton raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or is amended by vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein totaling $3,604,090. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $3,516,932, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town of Newton or by law, where the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 4013X and XV1 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. The estimated budget increase from the 2019 actual budget to the 2020 proposed budget represents a tax impact increase of .51, or 51 cents, per $1,000 of assessed value."
All right. Does anyone have anything they would like to say about this warrant article? If so, I'd like you to come up to the podium.
State your name.
State your name.
Annie Collier. I wonder, one, whether you're going to kind of go through some of the high points of what the differences are from last year to this year, and the differences between the default budget and this budget, and I'm also wondering what the tax impact is of the default budget.
The tax impact was identified as 51, an increase of 51 cents per thousand.
That's for the operating, proposed operating budget? I want to know what it would be for the default budget, please.
34 cents.
34 cents?
34 cents.
I think that should be on the warrant article.
I don't know if we can put it on there, but that sounds like a good idea.
It's on, I can tell you, it's on the school district.
The school does it?
Yes.
So that's good to know. We should, I think people would find value in that info.
I think it's full transparency would be helpful.
Yeah, right, right.
But will you be going through some of the high points of this budget, or are you just presenting the number?
Well, we have gone through this budget several times, including our last meeting on the 15th.
But this is, okay, okay.
So all of the, all of what led up to this, and what the individual budgets were, what their increases were, all of that, has all been discussed in public leading up to this. But if you do have questions, we can give you highlights.
I can do the-
I think it'd be really great if you would.
Yep.
The difference between what we see this year, and I'm going to give you some numbers, and you're going to look at me and go, where'd that all come from? There were certain departments that actually had minor cuts. However, the large, large tax impact items are things like, this year, we're doing a revaluation, a statistical revaluation. That's an extra $56,000 that's not normally in the budget. We're seeing a $30,000 increase in the fire department in order to properly maintain vehicles. In fiscal administration, we're looking at $38,000. I've already, that's already actually absorbed everything that, the differential. The difference between the default and the proposed budget is $92,000.
I think it's less.
And if you add up those few items, you know, the police department has gone up. For a lot of the increases, they're standard, yes, people deserve pay raises in the past year, and this is a very, very tight budget. For many years, we have, the Board of Selectmen has deliberately worked to have the default budget and the town, and the proposed budget be as close as possible. However, what happens then is, in economic terms, it's called a death spiral to your budget. We were literally to the point of, do you really need a box of paper clips next year? This year, we realized that in order to do that, it would be an effort in futility. To try to get, shave the differential out of the budget would mean that we would have to start cutting services. We would have to start looking at, do we really want 24-hour coverage on the police department? Do we really want to make sure that our tanker trucks and our fire equipment is properly in code and up to date? Do we really want to, I mean, the state law requires that we do a reevaluation. Should we put that off and see how long it is before the state, you know, comes down upon us? We're realistic. This year, there was no way around it. We've been going to the well so many times that it's dry. We can't, and quite honestly, if we get the default budget this year, there may end up having to be cuts in services to the people of Newton, because we literally have reached the point where there are no more other places to cut.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Just a correction, it's not 92,000, it's 87,158.
Okay.
The difference between the default-
So it's only 87, in my, in, on my notes, I had added 5. But as you can see, I mean, simply the, the cost of the reevaluate, the revaluation wipes out half of that number. You know, the $30,000, I mean, $30,000 differential for the police, sorry, for the fire department for maintaining trucks. You know, that's, it's a no-brainer, but part of the problem is the fact that every year, our fire trucks get another year older. We have fire trucks that we are expecting to help people save their homes in case of fire that are going on 30 years old. Now, quite frankly, it becomes a effort in futility when you're trying to maintain a 30-year-old vehicle. First of all, it reaches a point where everything is starting to break down, not because it's been poorly abused, it hasn't been poorly maintained, but simply because metal fatigue and what have you cause problems. However, with a 30-year-old truck, it's hard to get parts, and when you can get parts, they become that much more expensive. There is something here later on in the evening in the, in the warrant to alleviate a little bit of that, but the numbers that I gave you for things like the fire department, for the police department, there's a $20,000 increase in the cost for the solid waste. Individually, they're fairly small numbers, they add up to that differential with these.
I will also say that part of the increase of this budget over last is the health benefits, FICA, Medicare, et cetera, those things go up, your health insurance, your dental insurance, those go up. And most importantly, there is an increase in the town clerk's budget this year, because we have four elections this year instead of two. So we do need to pay for people to be here for 12-plus hours on all four of those days. Those cause increases in those budgets as well.
By the way, the reevaluation, or revaluation, is going to be in the default, correct?
Correct.
Yep, so that should be noted.
Yep.
Because we have to do it, so.
Because it's mandated, it is part of the default budget, that revaluation. But if you look through it, there are no huge numbers anywhere. Part of our biggest hits is, as Selectman Doggett mentioned, we have been scraping to repair vehicles, they are older vehicles. It's just, we have to have the money to repair them, or we have to take them off the road.
Since I also work on budgets for the school district, I know the amount of work that goes into it, and I also, I don't know if everybody here has been like me, where I haven't been able to come to all your meetings and check and see things, because I have other things, so I really appreciate your going over some of those. I did have one question, it looks like IT is going up about 20-some thousand, 25,000?
Yes, we have computers that are running operating systems that are no longer supported. You can no longer get patches, you can no longer get updates, which means if these computers break down, they cannot be fixed. Unfortunately, everyone in town that uses a computer can't do their job without one.
Thank you, thanks, I really appreciate you taking the time to do that. I wanted you to know that I did a, I did a study of what the series of revaluations have been over the years by looking in the original, the revaluation documents, and what I found was that the average household has paid about $1,000 per house over the last 10 years to support this town. I mean, it has hardly gone up. Most of our taxes, taxes in Newton went up 15% over five years, from 2009 to 2014, for the schools, but for the, for the town, they stayed almost exactly the same. And over the last five years, the most recent five years, taxes in Newton for the schools have gone up 3.3%, and again, the towns have stayed about, very much, almost the same. So we've, you know, we've gotten some control, appreciate the control you've done. Hopefully, the schools being as restrained as they've become will give some room for the town to be able to make some needed investment. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Any, actually, you can't really correct it, the only thing we could do is change amounts if anyone so chose, but without any further, I would like to take a vote as far as-
Move to place on the ballot.
With the recommend date, no.
Sorry, that's right, we already did move to place on the ballots.
Yes, it's on the ballot, it is.
So move to recommend.
Do I have, yes, sir, come to the podium, please, and state your name.
My name's William Stewart.
I'm sorry, could you do it when you get to the podium? Thank you.
Mine's William Stewart.
What is it?
William Stewart. Now, I've been, because it sounds like you must know about equipment. I've been in my field for 32 years. I've ran heavy equipment shops, actually ran a corporate Goodyear shop. Those are going to have the vehicle maintenance, and you're going from, where's that? I seen it's from like $36,000 to $50,000 for vehicle maintenance, where do you justify that cost?
Which budget line item are you referring to?
Which department?
Yeah, exactly, which department?
Vehicle repairs, it's under-
Is it fire?
Fire, yeah. Fire department?
2019 was $36,734. They're jumping up to $50,000. So we're, how are you going to project that?
There are maintenance-
I realize, I was, okay, what's your, what's your operating cost per vehicle?
Fire chief is raising his hand.
Chief, would you like to, Mr. Stewart, our fire chief will be able to respond. Chief, if you can address the-
Just to-
One, one second. Chief, can you please come to the microphone and address the board?
The increase of the-
Chief, chief, address the board, please, thank you.
The increase of 20,000, we've, we've mentioned this six months ago, three months ago. We have three fire apparatus. One failed its pump certifications in March, that they, the board has a quote to repair, which is 12,000 and some odd. If that does not get repaired, that truck comes out of service, and the other two trucks for 2019, for the state inspection, they found-
A SaaS would compare to it?
Nope. And that's, that's what the extra 20,000 for is, so if it does not get approved, those three trucks possibly will be taken out of service.
I thought there was something on the P and Ls.
Nope, nope, nope.
Thank you.
Excuse me, chief, while you're there, could you please tell people the date of manufacture of those three vehicles?
One is a 91, one is a 95, and I believe the other one is a 93 or 94. Okay, and like I said, two are state inspections for 2020 that they will not pass. One is NFPA certification, pump testing, and pump recertification. Okay, one is March, two, I believe, is September, October.
So we're talking about apparatus that range from 24 to 29 years old?
Yes, ma'am, the three oldest in the fleet.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion to recommend, did we get our second?
Second.
Second by Larry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Let me call for the opposed.
Sorry, go ahead.
Opposed?
Still nay.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just tell you why I'm a nay. I obviously respect all the work that the department heads put in this every year. As Annie was referring to, we've been pretty flat, you know, every year I've been on the board. I just think we could have done a little better this year, focused on what we've actually spent rather than what we think we need. Having said that, you know, the, the difference won't be dramatic, wouldn't be all that dramatic, but it would be, as I like to say, in the right direction for taxpayers, and so that's just why I'm a nay. In the end, it was mentioned in the last meeting, this is going to go on the warrant, and people can vote if they want to see that increase of, I think it's 2.5%, or they can vote no, and we'll go to the default, but just my opinion.
If I may make one other point. I will remind people that if you look at your tax rate, that you just paid tax bills on roughly a month ago, you'll notice that the Newton Town portion of your taxes last year went down 23 cents per thousand. That is how stringent this board has been. It has literally reached the point where that stringency may not be found. So roughly half of this tax increase that you're seeing this year is because of a 23-cent reduction last year.
And the only thing that I will add is that we cannot, at this point, I feel, do a blanket reduction across all departments, which is one of our, the recommendations we had. It would actually require deep diving into each individual line item and justifying each purchase, which-
Is what the people expect us to be doing.
And we have gone to a certain degree. We have, as far as I'm concerned, we have gone through this as well as we possibly can. Can we not give people pay raises? Sure, then we cannot have employees, because others will pay them more. They already pay them more.
Some of them have not had raises for 15 years, is one of them, a really long-
Correct, there are some pay rates, some pay rates that have not been changed in 10 years.
Yeah, so don't paint me as anti-pay raise.
I, I'm not saying that.
Understood, but that's what it's coming out like. I just feel as though there were opportunities that we didn't take advantage of, and like I said, in the end, people will make the decision, so, when they vote.
So on to our next warrant article. Number seven, Larry?
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,202 to be deposited into the Engineering and Renovation Capital Reserve Fund created in 2015, said funds to come from the unassigned fund balance. This represents the rental fees received. This article will, would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes.
And for those who are not familiar with where this sum of $10,200 comes from, the town actually rents one piece of property at 8 Merrimack Road, and we do collect the $10,200, it is a business office suite, and the rental income is what goes into this account. And then it allows us to take that income and apply it towards where it came from, so for the engineering and renovations. Anyone have any-
I move to recommend.
Before we do that, does the public have anything they wish to address about this article? All right.
Madam Chair, I move to recommend.
Second.
Seconded by Matt, all in, any further discussion by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? That's unanimous. Next article?
Number eight, "To see if the town will vote as proposed by the Board of Selectmen to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,300 to increase the town treasurer's salary from $6,200 to $7,500 due to the increase of accounts, hours of work, and additional responsibilities. Last increase was 1996. This article would result in an estimated .003 increase, cent increase per $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes."
And in case you didn't catch it, the treasurer is part-time, she gets paid a stipend, she is also elected, which is why her salary is up for vote by the taxpayers. The stipend has been the same, 6,200, since 1996. So we are looking to increase it, because the number of funds that the treasurer has to deal with, and the amount of work that the state and the federal government has put upon a treasurer, has increased over the last 30 years. Anyone have any comments, concerns, input?
I just have a question. It would appear that her salary, or his or her salary is not subject to steps or experience, it's just a flat rate, and I just want to verify that that's true.
Stipend, once a year.
It is a stipend, so it is one fee that she is paid regardless of the number of hours she puts in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, move to recommend.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Article nine, "Shall the town modify and expand the purpose of the Cable Access Revolving Fund to allow for funding of the town's information technology? 100% of the amount of revenues received as stated in the cable contract for cable access, including franchise fees, or as determined by the legislative body, will be deposited in the fund, and the money in the fund shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year and shall not be considered part of the town's unassigned fund balance. The town treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund and shall pay out the same only upon order of the governing body, and no further approval is required by the legislative body to expend. Such funds may be expended only for the purpose for which the fund was created. This revolving fund was established in 2013 to provide cable access for public, educational, or governmental use. This article would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes." Now, what I will say is, the cable access fees that have been paid to the town have gone into a specific account that could only be used for cable-related activities. The purpose of this is to allow, which, that account has been growing, and it doesn't revert back, it stays in that account unless it can be used for the purpose it was intended. What we are looking to do here is to change the purpose, to also include other technologies, not just the cable technologies, so all information technologies. In the end, what that'll do is allow the franchise fees to help cover some of the other IT technology purchases, and to take some of that tax burden off of the taxpayers. So anyone have any-
I just wanted to add, earlier, there was a question about the increase to up IT. Some of that could, could be covered under this, so the, the actual cost of the budget might actually be seen, seen as going down. There are individual departments that have computers in their, in their budgets for the following year. If this passes, it would pay for the computers, the computers come out of the budget, as does the money. That money actually would, would still have to be raised and appropriated, but would be returned.
Correct, it would default back into the general fund.
Exactly. And it would, this is actually something very good, it'd be nice if you could have it say, this article would result in a decrease in the amount to be raised by taxes, but-
But we're not allowed to say that.
Exactly.
But it could. All right, any public input?
Jim Baker? I'm just wondering what, if you know what the approximate amount in the, in that fund is now?
I have the 2018 number was over 184,000.
184? Thank you.
And like I said, it grows every year.
Actually, every quarter.
Still every year, we already work on a yearly basis. All right, anyone have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to recommend.
All right, seconded by Matt. Any discussion by the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that's unanimous.
"To see if the town will vote to modify the elderly exemption from property-"
Sorry, Jim, could you please announce the article number?
Oh, article number 10. "To see if the town will vote to modify the elderly exemption from property tax in the town of Newton based on the assessed value for qualified taxpayers to be as follows: For the person 65 years up to 74 years of age, $100,000. For a person 75 years of age up to 79 years of age, $110,000. For a person 80 years of age or older, $125,000. To qualify, the applicant must have, have resided in the state for at least three consecutive years, own the real estate individually or jointly, or if real estate is owned by such a person's spouse, they must have been married for at least five years. In addition, the taxpayer must have a net income of not more than $35,000, or if single, or if married, a combined net income no greater than $45,000, and own assets not in excess of $85,000, excluding the value of the person's resident. This article would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes."
And just to explain, while the assessed values of properties go up, that means the tax rate and the taxes on- the tax rate and the taxes on these properties go up. Unfortunately for the elderly, their income does not tend to increase as quickly as the tax rate does. So this is trying to keep the elderly in their homes by giving them the exemption and increasing what the rates are. Anyone have any comments, input?
Jim Baker. So this is a modification of an existing policy?
Correct. There's already an elderly exemption that was approved by the legislative body.
Can you just tell us what the, what the increases are, or the changes?
I can do that. So the age limit, 65 to 74, was $85,000. We're raising that to $100,000. 75 to 79 years of age would be $110,000, opposed to $95,000.
$15,000, yeah.
And 80 or more years of age, instead of $110,000, will be $125,000. And we've increased the assets from $65,000 to $85,000.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Jim, you're much too young to worry about this right now, just saying that.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to say about this article? Anyone want to make a motion?
I move to recommend the article as written.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? It's unanimous.
That's me? Okay. So this is number 11. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate as proposed by the town administrator the sum of $34,400 for tax map conversion, updating, and recompilation services. This sum is to come from the unassigned fund balance, no amount to be raised from taxation. This is a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA 3276 and will not lapse until the map conversion is completed or by December 31, 2025. This article would result in no increase in the amount to be raised by taxes.
And would our town administrator like to speak to this article?
Sure. We've been notified by our current tax provider, tax map provider, that they will no longer be doing paper tax maps for us, that we must digitize. I guess everybody has gone that route, except Newton. And they have given us two budget cycles to be able to do this, which, this would be the first cycle. If it gets voted down this year, we've got one more year to try, and then we'll be in default with the state because it's a requirement by law. So the reason this has no tax impact, we did receive a municipal aid check in the fall for $48,000 to use however we wanted to use it. Unfortunately, we couldn't do it because we had to get bid prices first to make sure that, you know, we knew how much it was going to cost. So that money went into the general fund. We're now asking to take that money from the general fund to fund this. And we're not sure with the update, the statistical update this year, we have to wait until she, the assessor is done with that before we can really get into the mapping. So that's why we've done a non-lapsing in case it goes another year or two. But can't go two more, you know, years without coming to a consensus. Obviously, the tax mappers won't touch our maps if we don't.
And being a non-lapsing warrant article, that means the funds would still be reserved, so though the tax aid check that we received last year would still be able to be applied towards this after the reevaluation. Is there any public input, questions, comments? Anyone want to make a motion?
I would move to recommend article 11 as written.
Second.
That was in unison. We'll go with Larry. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Unanimous.
Warrant article 12, to see if the town will vote as proposed by the Board of Selectment to raise and appropriate the sum of $60,000 to be paid towards the 2020 solid waste disposal budget as an offset to the recycling and disposal costs, and to authorize the withdrawal of $60,000 from the transfer station recycling special revenue fund created in 2003 for this purpose. This article would result in no increase in amount to be raised by taxes.
This is a warrant article we have every year. And we have it again this year. Doesn't mean we'll have it next year, but likely would. And basically, what it does is it takes the revenue that we receive from the bulk items in recycling and allows us to take $60,000 of that and apply it towards the expenses for the transfer station, which helps to reduce the cost. Anyone have any public input, questions, comments?
Hi, Annie Collier. I'm wondering how much the revenue is and what's the status of this, of this fund? Is this the whole amount, $60,000?
No, it is not. It has not been increasing as well as it has in the past because, as I'm sure you all are aware, China stopped taking recyclables, and nobody wants it anymore. So our right recycling income is dwindling. However, we do still have some, especially for the bulk items as well. We are just not getting the income from the co-mingles or things like that. However, we did hear at our last meeting, so Nancy, I'm sure, has the number.
As of November 29, 2019, we had $207,000 in there.
It's my understanding that some of the buildings are almost falling down at the transfer station. Is this enough to be able to take care of them?
This $60,000 is just an offset to the recycling and disposal costs.
I see.
Not for maintenance or repair of anything at the transfer station.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns?
I just want to stress in case people didn't grasp the subtlety of Ms. Gonyer's comments, thanks to the golden sword, what a few years ago was actually a moneymaker for the town and helped to build up this fund is rapidly going downhill. We are lucky that we have certain of our recyclables are being picked up for free. Probably by the end of the year, we will be paying for that service. Thanks to the bulk items, this money is still going into this account. This account in the past has not just paid the $60,000 to offset the, the transfer fee basic costs, but has also paid for things like the hazardous waste day that we have every other year, to the sum of roughly $35,000. So this has been a very good moneymaker for the town. We have used it continually on a, that $60,000 has been almost an annual reduction that we have taken. One of the things that I will warn people is that unless something changes in the recycling world, we are going to see that account slowly ebb away if we continue to take $60,000 out each year. Because we're already looking at a $20,000 increase in the solid waste budget. And then if this, if we can't go to this source each year for, for money, we're going to have to be replacing it.
All right. Any further questions, comments, inputs?
Jim Baker, Newton. This isn't specific to this warrant, but I, I guess it's an appropriate time to ask. I'm just wondering if there's anybody in the town that regularly sort of scans for grants that are available from the state or other, other agencies? And what, what sort of status is there in applying for them if, if in fact, there are some that we would be, qualify for?
Department heads typically look for grants related to their departments.
Okay.
Outside of my full-time day job, which is more than a 40-hour-a-week job and my duties here, I have been looking for grants that may also be applicable. We are always willing, if anyone sees or hears of any grants that they think the town might qualify for, to approach us and let us know, and we'd be happy to look into whether or not it's worth pursuing.
Okay.
I did take a grant writing course, so it'd be nice to put that training to use.
Thanks.
So I'll, just in order to make sure that everybody gets credit, Selectman Foote, through the emergency management department, has brought in quite a number of grants. I've written some grants for the town that have covered things for the planning and land use boards. We do actively seek out grants whenever possible. They're limited usually because we don't, if you notice how our budget is structured, we don't have money in our budget so that we can handle a matching grant that comes up. Quite often, Mr. Foote does very well at finding grants that have what are called a soft match, where people attending meetings and what have you offset the percentage that is not paid by the grant, or the grant expects you to match. Quite often, grants will require a 50% grantee match. We have a $5,000 grant. We have to go scraping to try to find $5,000 in the budget in order to match it, in order to accept it. And quite often, we just, we do not have that kind of money.
So the reserve funds don't qualify for matching?
No. You actually, you have to be able to take it out of somebody's budget in order to, to match it, and...
Only because that's the only funds the selectmen have the power to say where it goes, is what's in the operating.
It has to be designated for that grant.
Exactly.
Before the budget is...
I see. So the, the funds that would be most probable are 100% grants, not where you have to have matching funds?
Those almost don't exist. There are, like I said, the soft match grants where, are the ones that I, a couple of the ones that I got through the planning board, were ones where they covered some of the chapters of the master plan. And the grant accepted the time that was spent by the individual board members at meetings, working on, on the paperwork, what have you, as the equivalent of the offset. But those are actually few and far between, and they're getting harder and harder to achieve.
There's no easy money out there.
No.
No.
If you're Manchester, I mean, I'm looking at the, the fire chief, and I know this is something that came up. He is put in for, he is put in for grants. And, you know, places like Manchester have much higher perceived need.
Right.
You know? We really need Scott Packs. I mean, we really, really need them. Manchester probably has enough for half of their people. I can't, I, I'm just pulling that out of the air. But it's still seen as that they need a lot more than Newton. Newton only needs 25 units. Manchester needs 200. Manchester's getting the grant.
I was hoping there might be grants for smaller communities, specifically targeted for smaller communities.
You do sometimes get that in, in land use. I know Mr. Foote has gotten it. Some of the ones have more to do with proximity to like Seabrook Station.
And there are some grants that are catered towards, say, rural towns.
Right.
Okay. I don't want to take up any more of your time on that. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So that was article 12. Without any further discussion, a motion would be...
Move to recommend.
Second.
Second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? It's unanimous.
That's me, right?
It's you.
I always get the long one. So article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $26,327 for the following community services: Area Home Care and Family Services, $3,800; Child Advocacy Center, $2,000; Drugs Are Dangerous, $2,500; Haven, $3,050; Lamprey Healthcare, $1,600; NHSPCA, $750; Rockingham County Community Action, $5,000; Rockingham Nutrition Meals on Wheels, $2,927; Vic Geary Center, $2,700; Waypoint, also known as Child and Family Services, $2,000, for a total of $26,327. This article would result in an estimated .051 cent increase per $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes.
For those who are not aware, this is another one of those warrant articles that we do have on our ballot every year. These are all services that many of our departments do utilize, such as the welfare department, the police department, et cetera. They're services the town is required to provide. So all of them are just who we're going to pay the funds out to. Any public inputs?
Roger Hamel. I was looking at the list from last year and wondering why family mediation was dropped off the list.
Doesn't exist. You can speak to that one.
Our police chief will answer that question. Just so you know, it was answered at one of our regularly scheduled selectmen's meetings.
Mike Jewett, Police Chief, to answer the question on why family mediation was dropped from the list from this year, family mediation is in the process of rebranding. It's something that we're, the police department has used family mediation since before I came here in 2002. It's a necessary thing. Right now, we're subcontracting the work out to the Upper Room in Derry. It's something that we need to get back in. It was a service that was really good. There's not a lot of community service-related stuff for juveniles, and we use that in lieu of bringing a juvenile to court. So I'm in the process of trying to help family mediation get back on their feet. That's one of my volunteer things I do on the side. I'd like to see them up and running, probably under a new name next year. So this year, they're not looking for funds. We're still, if people are still looking for stuff, they're still coming to the PD, and we're outsourcing it to other agencies.
Thank you. Selectman Doggett.
Two comments. If mediation comes back, they won't actually just be added back to the list. They will have to do as others have, where they will have to come. They will have to be a separate warrant article so that they can be fully explained before they can go back on that list. Another thing I will mention is because these organizations are on the list every single year, while it says that it's, to, you know, it will, it's an increase in your tax dollar. It's only on paper. Last year, we paid for these same services approximately that same amount. Next, this year, we will, so we can debate whether or not it's an actual tax increase because it's the same amount of tax every year that we have been paying right along. Most of our warrant articles work that way, that they're not, you know, suddenly getting a hit to the tax base.
All right. Any other comments, concerns, inputs?
I would move, move to recommend article 13 as written.
Second.
That one's seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? That's unanimous. We are now on to article 14. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate as proposed by the Recreation Commission, the sum of $4,500... Commission, the sum of $4,500 for recreational programs and trips for Newton senior citizens. This article would result in an estimated .009, so just under one cent, increase per $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes. Now, just for clarification, can somebody tell me if the recreational programs are also limited to Newton senior citizens for this $4,500?
Do you?
I'm sorry, ask the question again?
Well, it says, "For recreational programs and trips for Newton senior citizens." So is it recreational programs and trips that are, you know, so it's...
They're all for seniors.
It's all for seniors.
It's all for seniors, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that that's exactly what it was.
Yep.
So, these are programs, again, that we have been doing every year, at least since I've been selectman, and it is a way to give back to our senior citizens, who also help fund this town and this school system, so...
Substantially.
Anyone have any comments, questions, input? Anyone have a motion?
Move to recommend.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? That's unanimous.
Article 15. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, as proposed by the Recreation Commission, the sum of $15,750 to hire three part-time lifeguards, one part-time supervisor of lifeguards, and to purchase the necessary safety equipment, to oversee the safety of all swimmers at the town beach between May 2020 and September 2020. This article would result in an estimated .031 cent increase per $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes.
And we did have this article that did pass last year for lifeguards at the town beach, which was actually quite successful. We are looking, in fact, Matt, would you like to...
Yeah.
More details on this?
Not much more, just that it was successful last year, it was the first year those of us involved had ever done it before, so there was some learning experience, one of which was that we need to fund a supervisor for the lifeguards. It's why, if you compare this to the last Warren article, it has gone up a little bit, but we were successful identifying lifeguards in the community and hiring them, and we had some good, good feedback from residents, so we're going to put this out there again to see if people want to continue this program as, as we did last year.
And in case people want to know what this supervisor of lifeguard is going to be doing, they are going to be managing the lifeguards, setting their schedules, making sure that we do have lifeguards, arranging for sick, you know, if somebody calls out or vacations, or whatever the case may be, doing the paperwork, including submitting the payrolls, making sure that they have all of their certification. If the lifeguards run into an issue, they are the ones that are on call to respond to the lifeguards. So there's a lot that this supervisor is actually going to be doing, and this is why we need a supervisor, because you can't just leave a lifeguard on the beach, isolated with nobody to contact if there's an emergency. They deal with it, and then they make a phone call to their supervisor. Anyone have any questions, comments, input?
Move to recommend.
Second.
All right, and with nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? That's unanimous.
Article 16. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, as proposed by the Board of Selectmen, the sum of $5,000 for a sign at the street entrance of the safety complex located at Merrimack Road. This article would result in an estimated .010 increase per $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes.
This Warren article was placed on here at the request of one of our town residents during a selectmen's meeting. The board did agree that it could go on. It's one of those expenses that the Board of Selectmen did not feel merited the urgent need, and that there were other, more pressing expenses that needed to be taken care of, so it didn't fit within the budget. So if we do put a sign down at the street for the safety complex, that's what this $5,000 will do. So we're not looking for anything fancy, we're just looking for a sign.
Large. Visible.
So, anyone have any questions, comments, inputs? Good.
Move to recommend.
Nope. Got a comment. Uh-oh.
Jim Baker. How'd you come up with $5,000?
The original proposal for a sign for down there was in excess of $25,000 with installation and what have you. I'm sorry, but that's, I could never support that. So we looked at some ideas of what we, what we've spent for signs and what signage costs. This should give us a plain sign, you know, a fairly simple sign, you know, nothing fancy, no flashing lights, actually, no lights, period, but large enough so that it can be easily seen by, you know, anybody going past, and something that is appropriate to the town of Newton. I mean, we are, well, we're considered by many people a bedroom community. For a lot of us, it's, Newton is more of a rural setting. We don't need, you know, Las Vegas sign. We want something simple, tasteful, refined.
I'm wondering if somebody at the high school could do a sign like this?
That, that may be a possibility. When we said that we would, we would do this, we're putting it on there, if we have $5,000, I mean, if we don't spend $5,000, if we can get somebody like Jack Kelly, you know, with the wonderful machines that the seminary trustees gave them, they can, you know, do us out a sign that's for $1,000, that would be wonderful. But we have to be realistic, and at the same time, we understand that we may spend $5,000 for a really nice sign, and it might be the chief, myself, I thought I saw Mr. Zalinski in there somewhere. Yeah, we might even have Chet come, you know, we might have to get Chet to come over with his tractor to, to hold it while we do a certain amount of sweat equity.
Or you could have Mike get a little sleep, and then he could come and help you.
That's, that's, that man also does a lot for the town.
I'll check around, I'll check at the school and let you know if, if there's anybody there that can do it.
Yeah. That was actually on my list, as you know, I, I know the contact person.
I'll defer to you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have any questions, comments, inputs? Anyone have a motion?
Move to recommend.
Do I have a second on this?
A second for discussion.
Can't we use the funds that we get the rent from to pay for that? Or is that earmarked for certain things?
That's for engineering and...
Renovation.
Renovation.
The sign is a renovation?
That, that's considered new structure.
Good idea.
Anyone else have any comments? For, against, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I'm sorry.
All right. Now, you haven't responded to the aye or the nays.
Correct.
We need a yes or a...
I know, I know. I'm deliberating really quickly.
It's aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have three ayes, two nays. Aye, 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 nay, nay.
Okay. Who's the second? Who's the second nay?
Jim.
Jim, okay.
No, Jim was an aye. I'm, I'm, I was one of the nays, I'll just say that we actually already have signs there that I think are functional, so if I'm making a list of priorities for the town, this would be pretty low for me. Down the road, maybe this is something we want to invest in, but at this point, I can't support it. And we did, to Jim's point, we came down from $25,000 to $5,000, so that's good, but I still think we have functional signs there that do the job.
I am in agreement with selectmen borough. We do have other Warren articles on here that will increase our taxes, that I think have a higher priority. Okay, now, where was I? Oh, yes. And we do have a sign that says there is a police department there, we do have a sign that says there is a fire department there. All right, everyone turn your mics off. No one.
Nobody move.
Don't look at me.
So anyways, that's why I'm not in favor of it. I would rather see some of these other Warren articles pass instead of this one. Our next article.
Article 17. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, as proposed by the Board of Selectmen, the sum of $50,000 to be deposited into the engineering and renovation of the land and building located at Merrimack Road Capital Reserve Fund, created in 2015. This article would result in an estimated of 0.098 increase per $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes.
All right, so this is looking ahead. Our police department's building has been there for quite some time, before it was a police department. The Butler Building, which is the garage, has also been there for quite some time. These are buildings that need repairs, that are going to need more repairs as time goes by. In order to help alleviate some of the funding for these repairs as they come up, we want to put the $50,000 into the account so that when, say, the roof goes, we have the funds to pay for it.
I have a question. So, if Article, for the $10,200, Article 7, that rent money, $10,200, goes into that same engineering and renovation capital reserve fund, along with Article 17 for $50,000, but you can't spend $5,000 for Article 16 out of either one of those funds?
It's the same fund.
It's the same fund, right.
Yeah. So it's not, you can't spend it out of either of those funds, it's one fund.
So it's a bank account that we're, we're putting, if people vote for 10.2, right, goes in there from the rental income?
Correct.
We're hopefully going to put from 17, $50,000 more?
Correct.
So we have, whatever we have in that bank account, we can use it for engineering and renovation of the land and buildings.
$5,000 for the sign out of that fund, though.
The specifics of the account is for renovations and, what's the other thing?
Engineering.
Engineering. A sign is not engineering, and it's not renovations.
However...
We renovate our old sign.
It would not be inappropriate at the deliberative session to reduce this number by $5,000 if you wanted to, as an offset.
Okay. Just asking.
It's, I'm, I'm a big proponent of capital reserve funds, especially when we're talking buildings that are getting, that are aging. I wish we had more of these. I personally suspect that $50,000 may be a large sum to put in, to put in this year, but at least it puts a number before, before the voters and before the people at the deliberative session. I will be supporting this, though I would be much more comfortable if that was $25,000 for the first year that we're asking for this kind of input.
Would we recommend $25,000 tonight?
No, we could have done that on the 15th, when we met to discuss this, but now, we wait until...
I believe it had, it did come down from $75,000 at the 15th meeting.
Yeah.
Hi, Annie Collier. How much is in this capital reserve fund? Has, has this, this warrant has been there every year, but sometimes it passes, sometimes it doesn't. What's the balance?
Not this one.
The $10,000.
This is a new one?
17 is a new one.
It says Warren Article 17, which is a new Warren article.
Okay.
You're referring to the earlier, I don't know the number off the top of my head, the...
Seven?
Well, it's $10,200, but I don't know the article number, somebody's got it in front of them. That is the one you're referring to, that. We have, we have a tenant over there. Ever since we've had the tenant, we've had that article.
So for the deliberative session, I would suggest that you don't make an assumption that the residents have all attended to or listened to all your various meetings, and that you present more information in a very transparent way. I feel like there's an awful lot that is assuming that we know, and I think it would be very helpful to give it to us.
Well, that's why we're looking for questions, comments.
Right, so that's my comment. That's my, excuse me, that's my recommendation to you, that you do some sort of presentation that's a little bit, kind of like is done at the school deliberative session, where there's reason...
This is not the deliberative session.
Lisa, it's a, excuse me, point of order, this is a public hearing, so you're supposed to listen to me.
And I am listening.
Okay, so then please don't interrupt. I think that at the school deliberative session, what a lot of residents are used to, who go to these deliberative sessions, is getting, getting very transparent information on revenues, on balances that are on various funds, on whether this is a new fund or not. I think the information needs to be given, and I don't feel, I feel that it's being gotten because we ask questions here, not because you're presenting us information. So I'd appreciate it, and that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Can I just comment? Each of these items we go through in a public meeting, quite some time usually, that are available to be viewed as well, so...
Yes.
We, we probably, but, yeah, we obviously...
Her comment is to also have it compiled together for presentation during not only the deliberative session that you mentioned, but also for the public hearing. So maybe have a presentation on the wall or something that shows the numbers, what's in the funds, you know, some additional details for it.
Have the minutes ready.
And we will definitely take that recommendation under advisement. You're welcome. Yes? Say your name, please.
Roger Hamel. So the reserve fund referenced in Article 7 is the same as the reserve fund in Article 17, but why aren't they described the same? You're going to, I looked at it, I thought they were two different funds.
Engineering and renovation capital reserve fund. Engineering and renovation. You are correct.
One of them should be edited to whatever the official title of that fund is.
I, I agree with you. They are the same fund, they should have the same official title highlighted in bold.
That's a typo, and thank you for catching that.
Yes.
That will be correct.
That's what I said five minutes ago. It's the same fund.
What's that? Yes, it is the same fund. I, I...
That's what, that's, we agree with what you said a few minutes. Roger's just saying there was a typo in how it was described. So we want to be consistent.
Yes, we want to be consistent, so we will have that fixed for the deliberative session. You're welcome. That's why we have public input.
It appears that the title is most likely engineering and renovation capital reserve fund of the land and buildings located at Merrimack Road is not part of the title.
Well, we'll have that verified and update the appropriate Warren article.
I think the original Warren article had landing, land and buildings in it.
Oh, okay.
So I think we were just cutting that one shot, the number seven is the one, the way we worded it every year, and because we were looking, you know, to do the second article, I can make them read the same if that's what you're looking for.
I think so.
All right, we have another...
Chester Burris, for Merrimack Road, Newton. I, I keep seeing the engineering and renovation of land and buildings. Why are we putting engineering in?
Because that is what the original fund was created for. Because that is what the original fund was created for. So if there are any additional engineering that needs to be done in the future, it could come out of this particular fund. It's not to say that we have anything that needs to be engineered right now, but if there were, it could come out of this fund.
I would just give the example, and I'm no expert, but if we pave that area, it's, my understanding is we just can't pave it. There might be engineering that has to be done before we pave it so that our pave job lasts longer than a few years. That's where our understanding is.
But it was my understanding that that had already been done and approved.
No, that would be the reason behind this article.
Why that?
Another example would be if we need to, you know, something happens to the Butler Building, tree falls down, it needs to be rebuilt, or part of it needs to be rebuilt. You would have to bring in an engineer to ensure that it is done appropriately. They would engineer the plans, work with an architect. So it could be used for things in the future. I do believe some of the funds for the engineering of the fire station was also used towards this as well.
What was that again?
I said, I do believe that some of the engineering costs for the new fire station also came from this fund because it did allow for expenses against the engineering for land and building at that address.
And I thought there was a item in the bond agreement for engineering.
Yes, I agree. Now, I said, I believe. I would have to go back and check and see if that is an accurate statement. I could be wrong. It may just be something that we looked at but didn't actually follow through with.
In 2015, when this fund was started, because I know it because I was on the board, we added the word engineering because we have two engineered buildings there, and because renovations, and this was the then, what was, we were told, where we received information from the state, renovation does not include any potential engineering that might have to go into it. Say something happened with one of the struts in either one of the buildings. Renovation says, okay, you can go in and fix it, but if we discover that there's some sort of a problem that's causing failure to the strut, we couldn't use the renovation aspect to do the engineering aspect. They have to be separated, and since they're both, we now have three engineered buildings on that site, they're technically...
So it's like an insurance policy?
Well, no, I was, I was going to say, it's like, it's a, it's a big boy's erector set with the fact that it's, you know, steel girders and a lot of metal and bolts and what have you. That all falls under, under engineering because that also has to all be done in accordance with tolerance and metal stressing and metal fatiguing and what have you.
Basically, what it comes down to is when you have a capital reserve fund, you have to, you have to be very specific about what it can be used for. You don't want to paint yourself into a corner where if the language didn't cover something you wanted to do, then you wouldn't be able to do it, is what it comes down to.
And if we had done just renovation, it would mean that we could just do painting, do floors, interior stuff, but any big project like the paving, which does require engineering in order to fit into what we might think we would like to see there, we wouldn't be able to take, we wouldn't be able to use the money. We'd have to raise an appropriate money for the engineering and then hopefully get people to, to fund it out of it. We chose not to paint ourselves into the corner.
So the, so do you think you're gonna, out of this 50,000 that you're trying to raise or whatever the number's going to be, save out a portion for just engineering?
No.
How are you going to figure that out?
The fund will be used for the purpose it was designed for at the time that it's needed. If engineering is not needed at the time some renovations are needed, then the fund would go towards renovations. If engineering is needed but renovation isn't, then the fund goes towards engineering. It depends on what is needed at the buildings. This will, as I said, these buildings, the Butler Building and the police department buildings are not brand new like the fire department building is. So there will be occasions where things will need to be renovated. It could be the siding, it could be interior walls, it could be floors, it could be roof. There are any number of things that could need repairs or renovations, and what we don't want to see happen, which happens a lot in this town, is that we get hit with a big expense because something failed, and we don't have the funds to pay for it.
Do we have a balance with the N O?
Yes, well, 40,000 as of this year, but we haven't transferred the funds from this year yet. We have to wait until after town meeting vote. So it'll be another 10,000.
I mean, a couple of examples. I know the police chief recently gave me a tour, and he has a doorway that has a, shall we call it a high stoop to step over. We don't, you and I would go, okay, yeah, we're going to cut away the stoop and, you know, we're gonna just frame it in and put a new door in. However, nowadays, because of the type of structure it is, and in order to find the right material, 10% of that cost could be, yeah, we're going to have to have somebody who can tell us whether or not it's safe, you know, what kind of metal, what kind of bracket we need to put so that we can lower the header on it, fill it in. That is considered technically engineering nowadays. You and I go, it's common sense. But in order to be able to spend the money, we need to be able, we need to have that in the title.
Okay, thank you.
For, for right now, the fund has about $40,000 in it.
You said it must be 10?
We are trying to put the town into a position where we don't get hit with a catastrophe without being able to afford to cover it.
So it sounds to me like the money that it is in it right now is just the rental receipts from the past four years.
Correct, yeah, absolutely.
And you're looking to put in the 10,000 in rental receipts for this year and then also add to it 25 or 50 or whatever the number ends up being out of the deliberative session?
Technically, it's the rental receipt from last year that's going into the fund this year.
Okay. I just wanted to make a point, that this was established in 2015, which means that if the name were to be changed, it would have to be dissolved and by a warrant article and do another one and all that kind of thing. It isn't something that could be done at the deliberative session, so the name is what the name is.
So, so our intention wouldn't be to change the name to a new name, it'd be to match the existing name for this new warrant article.
Right.
Because you're absolutely right.
Yes, we cannot rename it at leisure. That would indicate a change in purpose, which we cannot do without a warrant article. Okay, so...
Can I move to...
You may.
I would move to recommend this article as written, Article 17, that is.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yes, no.
What, you? Kate, did you...
I said aye. What is Kate?
Kate, I'm an aye.
Kate is an aye.
You spend now so you don't spend more later. Mr. Doggett, I'm waiting for yours.
I'm an aye, however, be forewarned, I will be making an amendment.
All right, well, that's at the deliberative. We won't worry about that one right now.
To the note, to the amount.
Okay, okay, so...
Larry, did you want to share anything?
I just think it's one of both accounts.
You have so many.
You know, it sounds more to me like a $50,000 insurance policy in case we need an engineer, which we have town insurance. If the building fell down or broke, we go let the insurance company take.
Not for disrepair, only accidental, the insurance.
Repair accidental.
Right.
Yeah, it's not for repair.
He just threw out a lot of stuff out there that seems like something an insurance company would take.
The insurance company wouldn't do it unless the place caved in and we're covered, like by snow.
I'm still voting aye.
You know, I think for me, the reason I voted in favor of this is because after construction over there, the site needs repaving. So not, not the brand new pavement, that's good to go. The pavement around the Butler Building, the pavement around the police station, we could use some, we, we could use that money for this, that's why I'm voting in favor of it. I think that's why Jim is talking about doing a slightly lower number, maybe to have more success with. I would even be in favor of that. We can cross that bridge at the deliberative, but that, to me, is the most immediate reason for having this fund. I know there were all these examples just cited about things we could do with it, but that's not on my mind right now as I vote for this.
And see, part of my rationale is we have two buildings over there, the roofs are getting older. I believe in capital reserve funds. It's easier to put in $25,000 a year to a capital reserve and have it so that the day the chief calls and says, you know, the rubber membrane on the roof split, and I now have water coming into the inside of my building, we need a new roof ASAP, we're not going, well, March is only six months away, and if we get it in March, we can probably get the work done in June or July.
So again, you're citing it as an insurance policy if the roof leaks.
It's a self, it's a self-insurance policy. You cannot buy insurance.
For this.
I'm sure you probably could buy insurance on a roof, but they, we, this is a self-insurance policy.
Yeah.
There you go.
And the reason for having these capital reserve funds is because there are unplanned expenses, high-cost expenses, that our budget does not allow for. So if we are not proactive in preparing for what will inevitably occur, then we will be in trouble.
And capital reserve funds are standard in, you go to downtown Exeter, an apartment building, say, if someone has a good capital reserve fund, the value of the property is more. It's not, it's done typically when you do proper planning because it saves you money in the long term.
And the other thing is, is I am not looking for this to be an annual warrant article.
Yeah, no.
Okay? This is the one time for right now, but it is to protect the town because we know eventually this is going to happen, we just don't know when.
Exactly.
All right, so we've had our vote, let's move on to the next article. Who had 17?
We just did 17.
Was that you?
I was 17.
All right, then, article number 18. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to enter into a 10-year lease purchase agreement to purchase a fully-equipped E1 fire apparatus for the fire department at a cost of $649,000 payable over a term of 10 years at a rate of $76,744.14 annually, and to raise and appropriate $76,744.14 for the first year's payment. The full cost of the vehicle is $669,000. The amount of the lease reflects the trade-in value of the vehicles being replaced. This agreement does contain an escape clause, and majority vote is required. This article would result in an estimated 15 cent increase per 1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes. Now, I will say that when the warrant article came on a couple of years ago for the tanker, it was mentioned more than once and stressed that we had other apparatus that were also aging and getting to the point where it was going to be near impossible to repair or highly expensive to repair, such as the 191, the 92, the 94,000 machines that our fire chief mentioned earlier tonight. This is to bring in a newer apparatus so that we can retire and actually trade in against the purchase, which is what's reducing it down to the 649,000. So any questions, comments, input from the audience?
How, how long is the lease for the current fire truck? When, when is that lease going to be paid off?
The tanker?
Yeah.
I think it was a six-year lease, and I think we've paid on three or four years. I don't have it in front of me, but...
2015, I believe, is when the...
We bought it in 15, so we paid four years. We're going on to the fifth, and it's for six.
So there's two more years on the, on the, actually a bond.
Jim Baker?
It was a bond.
It was, and it was a lease agreement.
Okay.
Didn't we do a bond for the tanker?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, so this is a 10-year lease, but you're, and you're looking for, to appropriate the money, the 649,000 plus the, the first year's payment. Are you going to need another warrant article if this passes next year for the 76,000, or is that automatic?
It's automatic since the warrant article does state that it is a 10-year agreement.
Okay, thanks.
It has been sanitized.
Do we have in our budget ever any unexpended monies at the end of the year, or is every penny spent?
Very little.
Yeah, it's in here, too.
But we do typically have some amount of unexpended.
Okay. I know that it's the practice of many other towns to set up with unexpended funds, some capital reserve funds, so that when you have a new piece of equipment like this, you can start to draw into it instead of having a warrant that is, you know, a big hit. It'd be nice if, as selectmen, if we could start to have some sort of a plan to move in that direction. Just, just saying, you know, going to what Mr. Doggett said earlier about kind of planning for future expenses with capital reserve funds.
Typically.
We did that last year for 50,000, and it failed for capital reserve.
Many times, you have to ask two or three times before something passes.
Take a look at Article 21.
It's coming up. Okay, good, thank you.
We actually have a capital reserve fund basically just for this purpose. It's for new equipment and major maintenance.
It is the Fire Apparatus and Equipment/Refurbishment Fund, like I said.
Okay, I didn't read ahead, thank you.
In the past six years, I believe we have tried four times, I'd have to go back and double-check, to put money in there, and it has been continually defeated, so...
Hopefully, with the restraint we're getting for 80% of our taxes through the schools, there'll be a little bit more room for people to be able to support the town. I wanted to make another comment, which was in your discussion prior to your vote on the prior article about putting in a capital reserve fund and then a plan basically to spend a lot of that money. I don't, I think it would be important to tell the voters what it is that your plan would specifically be for repaving and why. If I think I'm voting for a capital reserve fund to build for the future, as Mr. Doggett said, but Mr. Burrow has plans to start spending it, I'd kind of like to know the details of that.
The board has not made any decisions to spend any money because we do not have any money to spend. The first step is to get the funds approved by the legislative body, which will then put it in that account. Then we're not going to proactively look to see, hey, where can we spend this money now that we have it? What we really do is, we have this need, how can we fund it? Oh, it falls under this category, then we do that. Oh, it falls under this category, then we do that.
One of the reasons why we're asking for it in this way is because if we decide it's better off to do it in a year, the money's still available. So, once we decide we're going to do the project, we're going to look for three bids, and we're going to be doing all of that in public meetings, so people can certainly come and see the details as we move along when, when the project's a reality.
And as you can see, even though we might appear to work very well together, there are differences of opinion amongst us, and, you know, it's not a case of, yeah, you put $50,000, and Mr. Burrell will be coming in with a paving plan that will be necessarily blessed by everybody.
I'm glad to hear you're not in March yet.
Exactly.
We, we do have our own minds. We do have our own beliefs. And, you know, depending on what's brought forward and the facts for them, you know, selectmen may be all in favor or part in favor, but the people will hear why we are for or against, whatever it is, we're for or against.
Lisa?
Yes.
Can you explain to the people about the repairs that were, the money we're spending going into these old trucks?
Sure.
Yes. Now, what is it, like $35,000, I think?
I don't know, you can ask the chief. How much money have we been putting into these trucks to keep them on the road, the old ones?
I honestly...
Because I think we're throwing money out the window.
I was going to tell you, I know the oldest one, and I could be off, so forgive me. The oldest one, which is the 91, which is one that's talked about being traded in, I believe in the past eight, nine years, approximately $160,000.
So there you go.
And it needs probably, I think that one, I don't have the quote in front of me, I think it needs $5,000 to $6,000 for it to pass its inspection sticker.
Yeah.
And that's just, nothing else has been done to the truck that we know it's going to need those repairs for it to pass inspection.
I'd also like to make sure people understand that since this is fire apparatus that gets inspected, it is not a $40 inspection, okay? The inspectors actually have to be licensed to inspect fire apparatus vehicles and licensed to work on the fire apparatus vehicles, which puts the labor costs and the parts at a much higher rate than, say, your car. Also, the, as the chief mentioned, with the $160,000 in repairs that we've done...
For one vehicle.
To one of these older vehicles. That's a substantial down payment on a new vehicle. Now, the newer vehicles still have costs for maintenance to keep them on the road, including the inspections and things like that, but nowhere to the extent that the older apparatus have.
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong. I seem to recall last year, we were looking at a price for tires that were, it was like $11 or $1,500 per tire versus standard...
Right. With all due respect, we've, 2019, those trucks were out of service, with the exception of the newest truck, the ambulance. The ones that are in question were in and out of service that needed so much work, I honestly couldn't stand up here and tell you without getting the folder on what they needed. But the, the one thing with this apparatus, it's actually a rescue pumper. We're planning on, if it's approved, trading in two of the oldest apparatus.
A lot less.
To get one that will serve the town, instead of, but again, it's up to the voters.
And what that also means is, since this one new apparatus will serve the same purpose as the older two apparatus, is we're only going to be inspecting one apparatus in the future and not two.
I'd just like to say, as the new select, I've been here 10 months, and the repairs, it's very, I've learned a lot. These are very expensive. These old vehicles are expensive to maintain and repair, and as time goes on, it's more, and you just see all this output of money that the town is putting out, and it'll be great if we can get a list, because I think if we could show the list, people would say, oh, wow, again...
We did generate a list.
Yeah.
Way back when, and brought it to the board.
Yep.
We need it for the public.
Yeah, we'd love to get it for the public, because we're spending a lot, and it's not because they're, they're not doing anything wrong. I mean, they're a great fire department.
That would be a great item to have at the deliberative session.
No problem.
And the idea is, again, like, we don't want to keep pouring money out.
In talking with a different fire chief, who actually has better equipment than we do, regretfully, informed me that maintaining old fire trucks was like maintaining a, you know, a 1940's Lamborghini, except for the fact that it doesn't have anywhere near the value. So you're just dumping money in, and it's just disappearing.
I also turned in, in that packet, the NFPA standard on what time a municipality should retire an apparatus. That's scary, because you're technically, I believe it's 25 years, so you might lose a few of them. Just, just putting it out there.
All right, thank you, chief. All right, if there's no further comments, input, we got one more.
Jim Baker? You have the expenses for repairs right in the town budget?
Correct.
If you look at, um, there was equipment repairs for $5,000, there's...
Where are we now, fire?
Vehicle maintenance, $12,000, vehicle repairs, $30,000, and, yeah, and $30,000, so...
Yeah, but I think he's giving us a five-year plan.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, this is just one year.
You can't go by one year.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, thank you.
My comment, I'd like to make a comment. When you do the rationale of why these things are important, these warrant articles are important at the deliberative, I think when it comes to the, the capital reserve funds, we've all talked about it, you know, how would, how would it benefit the taxpayers? Instead of having a big, huge increase in a particular year, you're going to have a gradual input of money into a fund to offset that. I think the, that rationale should be explained to people, not necessarily specifically how the money's going to be spent when you don't have a plan, but the rationale of why you need these funds and you need to fund them is important for people to know.
Nick, good point.
Yeah, thank you.
You do bring up, and it's very important to understand, that if this goes through, there would be a savings in the fire department budget. However, while this is replacing two vehicles that are money pits...
Exactly.
And we have another, you know, basically new vehicle there, we may need to still put, well, I can guarantee you, we will still need to put money into maintaining the other vehicles. Should not cost us as much, but you can't take it out of the operating budget unless you're guaranteed that this is going to pass.
Right.
So, the operating budget comes first, this comes later, they both pass very nicely. People know how stingy I am when it comes to money. The gentleman that's standing at the podium now can't, is not going to be able to look at us and go, ah, well, we got the new truck, so that frees up $20,000. No, that's, we're still going to hold his feet to the fire and make him justify his expenditures.
Just if I may, Madam Chair, the gentleman brought up the 2019 budget, I believe it was at $30,000. If the board remembers, we were in here throughout 2019, that number's actually higher, but the board took money out of equipment purchase, out of the grant, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, to make those payments. So on paper, it might look like $30,000, but the bookkeeper probably would have that number, because there was a lot of money 2018, 2019, that came to pay to have these trucks repaired.
And just for clarification, these repairs, the expenses, and where to find the funds for them, were discussed in the selectmen's meetings, the public meetings, and it really came down to, the budget did not allow in his line item for the amount of repairs that were found needed on the, during the inspections. So we, as a board, had to find somewhere and find out what we had to forego in order to get these things to be repaired. As the chief had alluded to earlier, some of these apparatus were actually taken off the road.
Yep.
Because they were not safe and would not pass, so we didn't have the apparatus to actually respond to the fires.
That's all part of the rationale.
Exactly. Yes, and that's the whole reason for doing this. All right, so if nobody has any further questions, comments, concerns, do I have a motion for...
Move to recommend.
Forget what article we're on.
This is Article 18, the E1 fire apparatus.
Okay. Second.
All right, that's seconded by Matt. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous.
Article 19, if Article 18... To see if the town will vote, as proposed by the fire chief, to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be placed in the existing capital reserve fund known as the Fire Apparatus and Equipment Refurbishment Fund. There's a slash in there. Voted in 2011. This article would result in a .098 cent increase per $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes. This is sort of the fallback?
Yes. If Article 18 does not pass, then, and Article 19 does, then $50,000 would be put in that capital reserve fund that could be used for us to try again, with some of those funds being used against another purchase in the future. If Article 18 is successful, then Article 19 is moot. Even if it does pass, the $50,000 would not go into the capital reserve if we do purchase a new apparatus. Any questions, comments, input? Looks like everybody's...
Motion to recommend Article 18.
All right, so Larry and Jim, any further comments?
Can I ask a quick question? On if, if we were doing the $50,000 every year to buy a truck for $600,000, does that come out to be about 13 years before we could buy a truck?
Yes.
Yeah, 10 years is $500,000.
So there's your, there's your, your example right there. We can't wait 13 years unless we close shop and let all the other towns support us. So, it's important to know that. Good point.
What's that?
You finance some of the year.
If you get the townspeople vote.
Every year.
Just wanted to make that point, that's all.
And actually, that's 13, 13 years of every year, actually, passing.
Exactly, exactly.
And that's assuming that it would still cost $650,000 in 13 years, which is not likely.
I suggest, Annie Collier, I suggest that you add a sentence at the end of 19, saying, if Article 18 passes, this article is null and void. I know, I understand you have it in the beginning, but I think it would be just an additional clarification.
All right, that is something to be recommended at the deliberative session, if you so choose.
I think the selectmen can change, I think the selectmen can change their warrants.
Okay. DRA did approve the wording of this, so unless someone else here would like to...
We may want to check with DRA and just make sure.
I can check.
Yeah, that's true.
But yes, we can add it at the deliberative.
I, I will say that we do, we have started putting out a voter's guide for all of the warrant articles, and it would be explained in that voter's guide what a yes vote and a no vote means. So, even if it's not in the warrant article itself, it would be in the voter's guide.
You have to take a vote.
Yes, well, I got to get a motion.
Do we have the motion?
Oh, that's right, that was you and Jim. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm a nay, and I'm only a nay because of the article coming up, which is not conditional, so I'm more in favor of that one. And I don't want to be in favor of two of them. So that's four yes, one no.
Oh, okay, you're referring to Article 21.
Correct. All right, Kate?
20?
20.
Article 20, to see if the town will vote, as proposed by the Board of Selectmen and the police chief, to establish a capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSE 351 to be known as the Police Cruisers and Equipment Fund for the purpose of maintenance, repairs, and purchase of cruisers and equipment, and to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be placed in this fund, and to name the Board of Selectmen as agents. This article would result in an estimated .049 increase per $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes.
Just so people are aware, while we do have a Fire Apparatus and Equipment Refurbishment Fund voted in 2011, we do not have the same type of fund for our cruisers. So this is looking to establish one so that we can try to get on track and not fall into the same situation we are with our fire apparatus.
Madam Chair, I want to apologize. The, I voted yes to recommend 19, and quite honestly, I was under the assumption that 20 and 21 were going to be going away. In light of the fact that they are still on here and are going to the ballot, I would like to withdraw my support for Article 19.
All right, so we're saying three ayes for 19, two nays. Do you have that adjustment? All right, but we are on 20, so as I said, same purpose as the fire fund, we just don't have one, so this will create one and put a starting balance in it. Any questions, comments, inputs? Any recommendations?
I would just like to say, as, as the chair alluded to, we've, we've really pushed our police cruisers to the limit over the past few years. We do at times fund new cruiser leases, but at other times, we're finding we have to make do with very old cars that are, really, we do have a repair and maintenance line item in the police budget, but it's, like anything else, it gets prioritized, and sometimes we live with some things which really, you could argue, are, are safety issues, and we're really putting ourselves on a track that we're going to have trouble digging out from. So to me, I like the idea of putting this as a warrant article that people can vote for. If they want to fund additional repairs and perhaps additional purchase of police cruisers, they can vote yes. If they don't, it's, it's there, black and white, it's not buried in, in the full budget.
I would also like to mention that where it does say Police Cruisers and Equipment Fund, that does expand the fund to make it so that if our vests, what kind of vests are they again?
Bulletproof vests.
Let's say they become outdated and must be replaced according to federal police guidelines. That would become a big unexpected expense that could potentially come out of this fund if we had those funds. That's an example of an expense. It would, or it could be for a cruiser. Cruiser gets, oh, I don't know, the CV shaft falls apart.
Could we use some of the detailed money for this? How much is in that fund?
It's mostly self-sustaining to pay the offices. We don't have much left over. We don't have much left over.
Yeah, it pays the officers and the administration, which is why the chief was mentioning that we may or may not actually need to increase the administrative or cruiser fees.
So, the cruiser fee currently, for as long as I can remember, I'm going to go back, probably say 2004, if you guys look back historically in the budgets, the police department hasn't budgeted for fuel. There's actually no line item for it. That comes out of the special detail account, which I think is, you know, if we do the details, then we get fuel. If details stop, we have no fuel. I don't know what the account balance is on that. That's something that's revolving. It's every time we do a detail, a portion of the money goes into it. So, this would be something that's completely separate from that.
All right, any further discussion, comments?
I would move to accept warrant article or recommend warrant article 20 as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing done. That's unanimous.
Kate, you did that one right?
Yep.
Article 21, to see if the town shall vote as proposed by the Board of Selectmen and the fire chief to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 to be placed in the existing capital reserve fund known as the Fire Apparatus and Equipment Refurbishment Fund, voted in 2011. This article would result in an estimated 0.49 increase per $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes.
Yes, chief.
I'm sure the board knows I'm going to stand up here. I had a lengthy talk with my liaison. 21 and 19 are the same. So, with all due respect, why didn't the board just ask for $75,000 in one article instead of two articles? When I approached the board, we asked for $50,000 because that's what was since 2011. And I did explain to my liaison so the board would be aware that I'm going to be standing up here to discuss Article 21.
Discuss with who?
With my liaison, on how I was opposed to having two articles for the same thing. If the board chooses to do 75, then do one article.
I agree.
I did not ask for 75. I asked for $50,000, although I thank the board. There's a lot of articles on this warrant. What I foresee is, one, it doesn't look right. I've never seen this in my career, double articles. What I foresee is a big no going down on all the articles, and some of these articles we need desperately. I'm not disagreeing with the board on the $50,000, but in reality, you're asking for 75, so you guys should have just...
I think personally, it's one hand not realizing what the other hand's doing, because I was focused on 20 and 21 when we were drafting this. I wasn't really...I wasn't seeing 19. You're absolutely right. I wouldn't have both of them, and I would...I'm not asking for 75.
Neither am I.
I would stick with...
I'm for 19.
Can I make a motion to withdraw a warrant article 21?
Actually, 21 is the one I'm in favor of.
25 instead of 50?
I'm in favor of putting funds into the account without being contingent on warrant article 18.
That's the important thing.
That is what I am in favor of.
It would be 19 he's talking about, correct?
Correct, because 19 is the normal article that's put in.
Yeah, but 19's a contingent article, so which...
Personally, I would rather support 21, a non-contingent, so that people can put $25,000 in. I know it's...$25,000 is, to me, an acceptable number. 19, if we vote to remove item 19 from the warrant, I have no problem at all.
I'm just saying there should be one. There shouldn't be two. So, whichever the board decides, there should only be one.
In order to make this...keep this clean, can we...we basically need to vote on 21, and then I would like to make a motion.
Exactly.
Just keep in mind, if you make any big changes tonight, we have to have another public hearing.
So, we can vote 5-0 in...
You could recommend or not recommend. Leave it up to the deliberative and make your changes there.
Okay.
Well, that's what I was going to suggest is, you know, deliberative would be the cleanest way, I think.
Right, but you cannot...you can't remove a warrant article at the deliberative.
They can vote it to zero.
Yes.
Right. Okay. So, you need a motion to recommend 21?
However, at this point, we can withdraw our warrant article.
I thought we could, too.
I'm not so sure you can without having another public hearing.
Actually, number 19, according to this, is proposed by the fire chief, so the fire chief does have the ability because we...
I don't believe so, Jim. It'd be cleaner to do it at deliberative so we don't void the whole thing.
If we just vote 5-0, I think the public will get the message that we don't want it.
Okay.
Exactly.
Really doubt if they pass it.
Exactly.
That way, it stays on there, and you don't get in trouble.
Annie Collier, at the deliberative, a motion could be made on 19 to just zero it out.
Exactly.
And that effectively removes it, and I bet it'll pass.
So, I think Larry was making a motion for 21.
Larry, did you have a motion for us?
Yeah.
For 21.
All right, yes, actually, did we get you and Jim was the second, right?
Okay.
You were a second on 21?
Yes, I was.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold on a second. Ayes?
Chief, is this the one you want withdrawn, 21?
He wants 50.
You want the 25 out and the 58?
I know I got it...I have an accent. What I proposed was the same warrant article for $50,000, and if the truck was approved, then that warrant article would go away.
Correct.
That's what I proposed.
All right, so I wrote nay on 21.
Me, too.
That's what I've always proposed.
All right, so you're not an aye. We have one, two, three ayes. All opposed.
Nay.
All right, we have two opposed. There we go.
So, three to two.
Correct.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to reconsider the vote on Article 19.
So, I'll second for discussion, so sorry to make you get up again, chief, but what I'm understanding is...
It's a motion to reconsider the vote to recommend on Article 19.
Thank you.
So, the thing that's bothering me about 19 is that it's contingent, but you're okay with the contingency. So, if both of them are unsuccessful, you have zero, right?
You have nothing.
Right.
Well, if they both fail, I'm sure 21's going to fail, too.
Yeah, probably.
I mean, that's the way it is.
It just...if you didn't use on 21 the word "fire chief," and it came from the board, it doesn't...in my world, it's not making me look good. It's making me...let me phrase that. It's making the fire department look greedy, because we're asking for two articles.
Yeah.
And the fire department did not ask for that.
But I think all of us agree, at least this much, we don't want the two articles, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have that much in agreement. So, we just, as a board, need to agree which one makes the most sense. You're saying 19 makes the most sense. These two are saying 19 makes the most sense. We're saying 21 makes the most sense.
I will leave that decision to the board. I'll leave that to the Board of Selectmen, but what we proposed, we, meaning the fire department, was Article 19.
Yep.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have no problem with the contingency aspect of 19. However, I prefer the $25,000 number versus the 50, simply because I've been adding up things in the budget and what have you. That's...the $25,000 is my comfort zone, my comfort zone to support. When I was under the impression that 20 and 21 were not going to be going on to the ballot, I supported 19. However, the idea that they're going to be on, I would rather have 19 at $25,000. That's the...
All right, so did you...
Split the pie between two.
Sounds like a motion.
Do we have a motion? We had a motion to reconsider, so are you moving to recommend 19?
I'm moving to recommend 19 with the $25,000.
That's totally different.
We do that at the deliberative session.
Yeah, deliberative is changing amount.
Okay, in that case, I will vote for 19, and like I said earlier, I'll be changing it at the deliberative.
Okay, so you're still an aye. Was he an aye or a nay on 19?
I don't know. Was Jim a yea on 19?
Three and two.
So, the motion is to reconsider an aye.
I was aye for 19.
Lisa and Jim are nay.
Just re-vote on 19, is I think what we should do.
All right, so, Kate, all in favor of 19?
Aye.
Aye.
Except for $50,000?
Yes. Contingent, if they don't get the contingent.
All right. Opposed? Nay.
I would like to revisit 21, and I would move that we strike 21.
So, that's four in favor, one against.
So, now I'm doing 21.
But you're in favor of 19.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I would move to strike 21.
Withdraw it.
Withdraw it.
But you did the deliberative, I thought.
I think it's on there. We've already passed this meeting.
All right, so let's be safe, and I move for a re-vote on 21.
There you go.
Okay? And I move to not recommend Article 21.
You're joining us.
As written.
I'll second that.
Do we have to withdraw the previous motions?
I thought we just re-vote.
That's essentially what I'm doing.
The motion to reconsider was the withdrawal.
Yeah.
All right, so Matt voted to not recommend, Jim seconded. The chief has a comment.
You're in the middle of a vote.
Well, we typically allow discussion after the first and second.
The only question I have, so at the end of the day, no matter what happens, those two articles are still going to be on the warrant.
Correct, yep.
No.
Why we have a 5-0?
No.
No.
No, what we're trying to do here is get to the deliberative.
Yep.
And I'm sure, I'll volunteer, I'm going to try to strike it at the deliberative.
Which one?
Hopefully, the people in the room will support it.
Actually, you can't, because deliberative session is not a...there's no vote to put it on the ballot.
Could somebody please motion to strike it for me at the deliberative? Can we just...thank you, Ann.
Thanks, Ann.
Okay, we're good. Annie, you're coming, right?
You better say.
You're not there.
My question is, even if it's...
If that works.
The young lady strikes it, it's still going to appear at the ballot.
It's going to be a zero.
It's going to be a zero with lines out.
What I was trying to do is change some numbers and totally take it out.
We can't at the public hearing. We'd have to have another public hearing.
Okay.
It'll be gone.
Don't we have enough time for another public hearing?
Oh, what, Roger?
Well, tomorrow's your last day.
Do you...yeah.
We're going to have a public hearing on one.
All right, Mr. Hamel.
Hi, Roger.
Yes, that's what the public hearing is for, is to change this while you can. So, you can strike them. You can't do it at the deliberative session. At deliberative session, then it...but for the day that you're setting what is actually going to be on the warrant for the deliberative session.
So, let me do this. Since there is question and there is limited time, I would be willing to entertain a motion to strike one of these warrant articles, provided it is allowed by statute.
Move to strike Article 21 as long as it's allowed by statute.
Second the motion.
All right, that was seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. And that's because I want 21, not 19. Does that solve the problem?
Might. We'll find out.
Okay, now, on the off-chance that, though you cannot strike it out, we do need to have a vote to recommend or not recommend Article 21. So, I would entertain a motion that if it cannot be removed, we vote to recover.
I think that was on the table.
Yes.
But I'll do it again if I need to. So, I would move to not recommend Article 21 as written.
Okay, seconded by Jim. All in favor of not recommending Article 21?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Recovered.
Again, that's the one I want.
I don't.
Can I please do the next one?
We are moving on to 22.
I think that's me, right? Article 22, to see if the town will vote to accept the donation of a former Newton 1941 pumper fire truck to be used for special events and to raise and appropriate the sum of $750 for maintenance and repairs to the truck. This article would result in an estimated .001 increase per $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes.
So, those who were not at the selectmen's meeting when this topic was brought up, one of our residents has generously offered to donate a former Newton Fire Department pumper to be used in Article 21, with the codicil that the town does take on the responsibility of maintaining that pumper for the future, which makes sense if we're accepting it. And we are estimating that it will cost about $750 to maintain it, and if it is going to be inspected, then it would obviously need to be inspected for roadworthiness, et cetera. So, it will likely be $750. It's a guesstimate at this point. Anyone have any questions, comments, input?
Move to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and we have some discussion.
Chesterburgs, 4 Merrimack Road. In the recent information I've received about inspections, I would request that you drop pumper.
That we drop what?
Pumper. Because if you're going to have to try to get it inspected, it'd be a pumper, you're going to be in a world of hurt. And in 1941, it doesn't have to be inspected yearly, period.
Okay.
Take pumper out of it, you're going to get away with it. If not...
So, it's a 1941 fire truck.
That's what it is.
Oh, so that's a typo.
It was a pumper, but it's not anymore.
Okay, so it may not need to be inspected to be a pumper, but I do believe it still has to have a safety inspection?
Nope.
That's a big question for the question.
That vintage, they do not need to be inspected.
Antique.
Antiques don't have to be inspected at all?
Not the way a regular vehicle is.
Well, not the way a regular vehicle is, but they're still...
They're going to use it for special events. You want to make sure it's safe.
Sorry, but you look at the statues, it doesn't need...they made it special by year, not by antique, but by year. And I neglected to bring it with me to tell you whether it was '46 or '47. I don't...
All right, well, in that case, you would still need $750 for potentially brakes, oil changes, that sort of thing there, but...
If you take that pumper out of there, you're going to be a lot better off.
Okay, all right, well, we are...so, if we're in the middle of a vote, we can rescind the motion and discuss modifying this article to remove the word "pumper."
So, we're currently under the understanding debatable that we can't make changes to...
No, 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 we can change the wording.
All right.
That one we do agree with. Actually, no, yeah, the wording is the deliberative.
This is what I'm understanding is we have to...
Yeah, wording is at the deliberative as well, so...
Also at the public hearing, because this is the point at which we would be able to correct any typo, any...
So, similar to your last motion, Lisa, we have to put...I would be, first of all, rescind my last motion. Actually, I didn't make the motion. Somebody else has to rescind it.
Jim made it.
I'll rescind my motion.
All right.
Okay, so I guess I could make a motion that if we're allowed, could we remove the pumper from the title of this vehicle?
I will second that.
I'll take it out. Doesn't change the intent of the...
Yeah, but just, you know, cover them.
Yeah, but the question is whether or not those changes are allowed to be made at a public hearing or deliberative.
The one request I will make of the selectmen's... The one request I will make of the selectmen barrel is, can we actually correct it grammatically? It is not "a," it is "the." There are not a plethora of 1941--
Sounds great to me, Jim.
Okay.
It's good.
Oh, my God.
Are we voting on it?
Are you sure the town of Newton never had more than one?
I don't really want to find out.
I'm fairly certain in 1941, they were lucky to have--
At 9:26, I'll accept the--
Well, maybe in 1951, we had a different one.
That would not--
So that is just a motion on the wording change.
Pumper.
To remove pumper.
All in vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just to clarify, the only time I think that would become a problem is when you go to register it with the town. If it says "pumper" on it, you may, the insurance company may throw you into that other jurisdiction.
Pumper be gone. And it's not even a pumper now, so just correcting a mistake.
Chief, you can just nod your head. There's no way this vehicle could ever meet NFBA standards in any way.
It's a parade piece.
Come on.
It would, yeah.
It's a ceremonial truck. All right, so now that we've voted--
Lisa's up.
--if allowed, to remove the word "pumper," can we have--
Move to recommend.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay. So let's be clear, we're probably talking 30 cents more in taxes for 750 bucks, but to me, it's just the, I see this as, you know, it's a parade piece. It'd be really cool to have this in the parade, but I don't think we should get in the business of collecting parade pieces. And it'd be nice if there was like a 501(c)(3) or something that, you know, friends of the Fire Department or something like that, that took this on.
And I will say, I voted yes based on a previous input from our fire chief, who had suggested to the board that it is possible that there could be funds for using it as a showpiece in certain events that could offset the maintenance costs. Is that an accurate statement, Chief?
What about the insurance costs?
It's an umbrella policy.
That is correct.
Thank you.
The board would just, if it is approved, the board just would have to vote on what department it's going to go to.
All right, thank you.
Give it to the police department.
So that's why I voted yes. All right, our next item.
Rosley, 23.
Did you do 22?
I did, yeah.
All right. 23. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, as proposed by the Board of Selectmen, the sum of $50,000 to be placed in the Capital Reserve Fund called Road Systems Improvements." The board is recommending this because we do hear from several residents in town complaints about our roads. If the voters were to take a look at the Highway Department's budget, it has been even funded for as long as I've been a selectman and much longer than that. What that means is as costs rise, fewer and fewer roads get maintained. Since the board has found it difficult in the past to get budgets that are higher than default to pass, we have decided to give the voters the opportunity to decide whether or not they want to have additional roads maintained in that current year and that is, or in other, future years as well. So this is allocating funds that will allow for additional road maintenance beyond what the current budget will allow, rather than having everyone deny the whole budget for that particular purpose. Anyone else have anything? Yes?
Oh, just my comment is, to me, that is not the reason for Capital Reserve Fund. A Capital Reserve Fund is, with this name, Road System Improvement is-- We know that there's a bridge on Pond Street that is eventually going to have to be replaced. And the last time we replaced it, it cost $125,000. And we're putting X number of dollars in per year, knowing that by the time we have put that money aside, we will be replacing it. To me, a Capital Reserve Fund is not someplace that you put money in and you take out. It's not, it's not like a revolving account. If you want a revolving account, we'll create a revolving account. But a Capital Reserve Fund is, to me, the aspect of saving over a long term for either potential calamity or a major purchase.
This could also be for redesigning an intersection that is considered to be dangerous that belongs to the town. That would be another purpose for this Capital Reserve Fund.
It may have started out as a capital improvements program back in 2001, but it had to be established in a Capital Reserve Fund in order to hold that money. So he already has an account with $91,000 in it. We need to add to it because we don't have enough funds to fix our roads. So this is the only way we can find a way to start adding to that account, because the Highway Block Grant Fund is not covering everything we need to do. So it's already established as a Capital Reserve--
I would say another example is the culverts on Heat Street that we know are in need of repair. And the funds have not been there in the Department, Highway Department budget for that type of repair. So it would be for specific items.
Put it this way, I could vote to recommend as long as this was in the same value range as 20 and where I believe 19 will end up. I just, I just think that if we keep going to the taxpayers and going, yeah, we want--
And, you know, I agree. I think this, as much as I know we need funds, I also know we can't hit up voters all at once because tax increases are too high.
Yeah.
I would also be willing to consider the lower amount to better the chances of it passing.
Since there's no motion on the floor at the moment--
Before we entertain a motion, I would like to ask for any comments, input, questions? Anyone? All right.
I'm sure I would move to reduce that number from 50,000 to 25,000.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes?
That means the statement underneath it would be .049.
Right, it would be same as the--
Right, the other one.
The other one.
And in which case, I will move to recommend.
All right, so we have a motion to recommend Article 23, seconded by Larry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's unanimous.
Article 24, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, as proposed by the Gale Library Trustees, the sum of $3,500 to remove and install a new flagpole at the Gale Library located at 16 South Main Street. This article would result in an estimated .007 increase per $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes."
It is my understanding from the library trustees that the flagpole is in dire need of being replaced. It is not within their budget, and they would like the, since the flagpole is so tall, it's not just a simple, you know, go out and, you know, dig a hole and put it in. I don't know if anyone's actually looked at how tall that flagpole is. It's probably about as tall as the one out front here, just to give you an idea. So they got the estimates of what it would cost to replace it, and they're looking for the voters to say yes. Anyone have any questions, comments, input? Anyone have a motion?
I'll move to recommend.
All right, so I have a motion to recommend. Do I have a second? Okay, that looks like it's filled--
Okay, so I'll move to not recommend.
All right, do I have a second on that?
Now, did you turn money in this year?
The libraries' reports indicate that they have expended all their funds from 2019. So Matt has seconded. Anyone have any? Personally, I think it needs to be part of the regular building maintenance fund. We are covering the flagpole at some point in the town operating budget, so I'm looking for it to be in there as well.
If this gets voted down, you can't use the funds.
No, I realize that.
You cannot recommend, but if it gets voted down, you can't use the funds.
Right, they wouldn't be able to replace the flagpole this year.
Is it a safety issue or it's going to fall?
I don't know, not from what we found out from the previous building inspector.
No, and this is not just to remove or to repair, this is to replace. So it's to take out the old one and put in the new one. And without one of the library trustees here, I'm just going by memory as to what was said.
Yeah, what I would like to have seen is this get added to the list of things we're looking to do throughout the course of the year. And, you know, that prioritized list we're looking at, I think, at the next meeting. I'd want to put it on there, realizing that because this is on here, if it does fail, we won't be able to do it, but--
No, but we could potentially encumber for next year?
I don't think we can encumber if it's a no means--
This year's money could be--
Yeah, that's right. So we would still have to wait till next year to do it.
Wait till another Warren article?
Well, I can't. It's, it's a Gale Library Trustees Warren article. They could at the--
Deliver session.
Deliberative, right?
Yep. All right, anybody else have any input, comments? Yes?
Maybe an Eagle Scout project.
That's always a possibility.
That's a potential, yes. All right, so we have a vote not to recommend Article number 24. All in favor of not recommending?
Aye.
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 All those opposed to not recommending. All right, that's unanimous. It's zero to five in favor of recommending. Okay.
Article 25. "On a petition of 25 or more legal voters to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to upgrade and replace Greeny Park Playground equipment and add proper safety surfacing. This is a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA 3276 and will not lapse until the Greeny Park Playground upgrade is completed or by December 31, 2025. This article would result in an estimated .195 percent, oh, sorry, increase for $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes."
All right, do we have, as I figured we might?
So I'm Erin Stevens. I am a part of the Playground Committee, known as Friends of Newton Recreation. There are six of us that make up this committee, and we've been working very hard the last about eight months to get all this information for you, to push the Newton residents to fund this playground. Correct me if I'm wrong, but from talking to different people, as I understand, the town has never put money into the playground. Is that correct?
It's probably, if it's not never, it's probably pretty close to never.
So I know that--
There have been Warren articles in the past, but they were unsuccessful.
Okay. I know that the woman that lives across from the street from the playground, back in the 1990s, she kind of did what we're trying to do now, which is band together the residents. And we've tried to raise some money. We've raised about $1,500, which is good, but we found out quickly that it's not enough. Playground equipment is extremely expensive. So we spent a lot of time in looking at different vendors. We want to be quality equipment, but we want it to be cost-effective as well. But when you look at the, what's going into it, removal of existing equipment, removal of sand in that large area, adding a 10 to 12 inch depth of wood chips, and then installing all-new commercial playground equipment, top of the line, which is-- Sorry. It's, you know, we have a custom play structure for ages two to 12. We have an iceberg net climber. We have an eco-mobile spring rider, a playhouse, and a sit-and-spin with a full swing set. So, commercial equipment, it just is crazy expensive, unfortunately. So that total price is $88,948. And they want to have at least a 10% built into that for construction purposes. If you run into anything, like if they start digging into the sand and realize that the equipment was put on a concrete pad, for example, that could cost some more money. And when you're talking about a project of that size, you don't want to run out of money. So that is why we went for the $100,000 article, even though it's for $88,948, the quote. And we feel as a board that we can absolutely make every cent count of that money, because we talked about cottages for the kids, that could be an added playhouse. And then we talked about, you know, benches and maybe picnic tables. And so we're confident that that $100,000 would, is just going to make that park wonderful for the kids. And again, I just want to reiterate that it's never been funded. I mean, I know people believe the taxes are high, and there's a lot of Warren articles on here, but if we do nothing, this playground will continue to deteriorate year after year. The residents of the town need to say, we can't allow this anymore. I mean, it's unsafe, right? The swings are breaking, there is, it's held by string. Some of our swings are held on by string that's tied on. Like, I mean, that's unacceptable. So it could be a liability for the town at some point if somebody gets hurt. The safety surfacing is not adequate. You know, the paint is chipping. This equipment from the 1990s is something that was also raised by just personal donations and stuff. So again, the town has never, the residents of the town, the taxpayers have never put any money into this. I believe what we put into the park now is like cutting grass. Is that, is that it?
That's about it.
So it is time that we did something. And I know it seems like a lot of money, you know, it's going to be about like $55 for $280,000 home, I believe. But when you think about it, if we've never spent any money on this playground over the course of the last 20 years that we've had the playground, right? And then this playground could serve us for decades. I mean, these playgrounds last. It is quality equipment. They last a long time. So when we think about that $50, $60 over the course of 20 years of our children having a safe place to play and, you know, get exercise, which is really needed nowadays, they need that outlet. We need like a nice community area that everybody can go, when everybody can enjoy. And so that's why we've been working really hard on this. So we, we hope everybody sees the value in it, because I absolutely think that the value's there. It's honestly embarrassing when we have baseball games and stuff in other communities like Kensington and Platteau, and they're coming to Greeny Park, and it's like, it's embarrassing. It really is. And I think we can do better. And so we really just hope that everybody sees that aspect of it and-- of it and agrees and makes the one time. It's a one time. It's not a recurring payment. I just want to, I know everybody here knows that, but for the people at home, too, that maybe don't understand that. Yes, it's $50 to $60, but it's a one time this year to fund the project, and then it's very self-sustaining, it's very low maintenance, and the kids will get years of enjoyment out of it, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any?
First, I totally get their passion for it. Secondly, it is absolutely fact that, one, we do have coverage for liability through our insurance, but that doesn't take away the fact that it is very unsafe. The swings go out over the skate park. We did remove, a number of years ago, a slide which was, you know, like, three-meter slide, and there are four inches of sand when it was originally put in. Legally, it has to be at least nine for an eight-foot, and it has to be about 24 inches of sand for a three-meter slide. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that is really unsafe there. When I was on recreation and we looked into some things, we went through some plans, and should this fail to pass, I'd like to have you guys maybe consider the possibility of one of the ideas that came forward, which was to remove the equipment as it is and instead take some of the beautiful boulders that are all around Greenie Park fields. There's some huge boulders which could be put there with a very, very shallow protective fall zone, and they're natural, non-deteriorating, maintenance-free climbing apparatus that kids could have a ball on. So maybe even put in some sort of a platform for performances and things like that and do something inexpensively instead of going for the very, very expensive kind of equipment. So it's an alternative to maybe be considered. $100,000 is gonna be hard to pass, but the passion that you have, make your votes, I
Anyone else? Mr. Dygett?
Just some historical corrections. The town has spent money on the equipment at Greenie Park. When it was first built, the town basically equipped it. There was a tennis court, there was a gazebo, and then gradually through the Newton Baseball Association and the town, the fields were developed and what have you. As I look through the warrant this year, there are a lot of things, but please don't say the town never spent a penny on Greenie Park. We have put a lot of money into Greenie Park.
Playground.
And at one time, we put money into the playground. Was it...
Jim, I've been here seven years, we haven't spent a penny on that playground, on the playground. We're talking about the playground, not the ballpark, not the tennis court, the playground.
We, there are, there is playground space in the town that we do fund, and that is at the elementary schools.
It's not Greenie Park. She's referring to Greenie Park as the warrant article, not other places in town.
Well, as I look at a warrant that is, that is adding up, it is very difficult for me to recommend that people spend $100,000 on playground equipment.
Well, you don't have to recommend it.
That's where I'm headed. It's a, it's a lot of money, and it will, it would become an ongoing expense. You do not put this equipment in once and then walk away from it. That's one of the problems that we have there now.
Apparently, it's not an ongoing expense, because I look at our condition of the playground now. We don't spend any money on it.
Right. Do we want to...
I mean, I don't want to get into debate, just, you could take the vote, and you can vote the way you want. I just think it's time we did it. I know it's an expense, it's a one-time expense, and I was glad to see, when I looked at the plans, that you went with the ADA compliant for the children who are disabled or whatnot, so they can use it, too.
And I think that's an important aspect right there that we do not currently have at our playground equipment.
Grandparents can bring their kids down there, sit on a nice clean bench, have a picnic, whatever, whatever. It's, you know, between that and the town beach, that's all we have.
You know, that's what I was going, that's what I was going to say as well.
Well, I stole it from you. And the town beach is only good for three months. And I'm not knocking you, Jim, but I've been here for seven years, and we cut the grass, we fix sprinkler heads, that's all we do down there.
I can remember a time when we used to have Old Home Day at Greenie Park. I remember the chili cook-offs and the apple pie contests. We don't do anything at Greenie Park anymore because it's a sad place. The only thing that happens there is baseball. There used to be the refreshment shack that was available. That had to be shut down several years ago. So it really doesn't have a lot to offer, and when the playground equipment starts to become unsafe, you can't even call it a park. It's a baseball field, and it's limited to those who play ball.
I think you need to leave the decision up to the...
Exactly.
If I could, if I could jump in here, the, I will say this, I congratulate the Friends of Rec. for taking this on because, and Annie can back me up on this, we've had conversations with at least three or four different groups of people over my years on the board, and everybody said, "Sounds great, we'll be back with a plan," and they never, we never saw them again. So eight months they've been doing this, this is more than anyone's ever gotten. I, for one, I'm gonna vote in favor of this, but I should say it's kind of for selfish reasons, because I have people in my household, we'd be using this tomorrow, and it's not far from my house. I do, I am concerned, as it sounds like most of us are, that there's gonna be sticker shock here, and it might not succeed. So what I hope is, we can try to tack, we can, if it does fail, we can approach it in a different way next year. Maybe it's too much too soon. I almost see this as almost like a five-year plan. Can we get a certain amount of money from the voters this year? Can we raise a certain amount to try to meet them? Maybe it's not halfway, but, but travel a lot of the distance and try to put something together that works for everybody. Because, as I said, my only concern is, is the sticker shock. I agree with a lot of what I've been hearing, because Jim said, "Yes, we have put money in there." It's been a long time, and it's frankly, I think Lisa was the one, or was it Larry, that said, "It is an embarrassment for our town that our park looks like that." So that's it from me.
Yes, sir. Can you state your name and...
How you doing? My name's Bob Marchand. Good evening to all of you. I want to thank you all for your service. I know being part of the council is, takes a lot of your time and your due diligence, but I think this needs to be, at least allow the voters to go through with it, because as you were explaining, the viability of, you know, we've just recently moved up here, it'll be almost two years, and the home days that we've been going to, I mean, they have the inflatable things that are there, but other than that, there's nothing for the kids, you know? And we go there, and we're there for like 15 minutes. As much as we'd like to stay to visit and become and know our relatives and our neighbors and stuff, there's nothing there. And we all leave, and I see the other people that show up there, they leave, too. And I mean, I added up everything for a $300,000 estimate of property, and the totality of all of these came up to, I believe it was $412.09, what would increase the taxes on the $300,000. So like was stated, even if it fails, it needs to get put out there and allow the, at least the voters to have some say in it. Because the other thing is that we hear and we read and we see about the children today who are sitting behind consoles, becoming fat and overweight, and they have no social skills because they're staying in their houses, and they become inept, learning how to socialize with other people, is a huge problem in the society today. And God has given us this beautiful piece of country up here for us to go out and enjoy, and what better to start our children out there in this country, in this neck of woods that we have, so that they start and enjoy it early and appreciate it, so that they then will take care of it when they get older and be able to care, to do something with it. So this is, there's a lot more to this than just a playground.
So, Mr. Marchand, I hope you are there at our deliberative session, because that's where your plea to the voters will have an impact. And I say that because this will go in front of the voters. It is a petitioned warrant article. The Board of Selectmen, even if they wanted to, cannot prevent it from going on the warrant. It is a petitioned article, it has the necessary signatures, it will be there in March for voters to vote on. But we do need you at the deliberative session to speak in favor of it and why.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I was just, was gonna say something before he came up. I just want to say the town spirit, one, is priceless, so it'd be incredible for town spirit. Children are our best investment. The voters will decide. It is a lot of money, but even from a practical standpoint, when real estate agents come to Newton and show homes to families and they see Greenie Park, that isn't good for our value, the value of our homes. So, in a sense, I doesn't know, doesn't mean it's gonna pass, but there's a lot of very positive aspects, this.
No, I see it's no more than the price of that Fortnite game they just bought them to sit at home and sit on their computer.
Exactly. So I'm gonna vote in to recommend, but that's just me.
Quite honestly, if this had come in like most of the other warrant articles that we've already worked on tonight, where it was a capital reserve fund, like Mr. Beryl said, $25,000 per year, I could support it without any hesitation. I just, quite honestly, do not see a $100,000 warrant article.
It may not.
Being, receiving our support, remember, as Selectmen, we are supposed to be choosing things that are wise and prudent. We, we need, we absolutely cannot do without things like fire trucks. However, I could see spending four years of putting money into a capital reserve fund for playground equipment.
Okay. Now, as far as our due diligence for looking out for the town as Board of Selectmen, part of our responsibilities is to ensure that we have a town that the, all of the residents want to live in. Not all of our residents are senior citizens, not all of them are parents of small children. In fact, even those who leave, think about the market value of their homes when they put them up for sale to leave. Having a park with decent playground equipment will make the market value of the home better than having no place for children to go, other than what we call a town beach, which is sand and a couple of small tables.
Madam Chair, make a motion to recommend Article 25.
I second the motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right, that's four to one. Thank you. Next article.
Who's reading that?
Article 26. On a petition of 25 or more legal voters shall the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $4,936, $1 per person, based on the population numbers provided in the 2017 census, American Community Survey, to support the substance misuse prevention, suicide prevention, and community wellness service of the SOROC Coalition for Healthy Youth. Okay, SOROC works, promotes wellness, and nurtures resiliency for the children, youth, and families of education program and resources.
Ah, you missed a line there.
Oh, okay. It's Newton as well as surrounding communities, I'm sorry. SOROC works through coordinating community education program and resources, and collaborating with federal and state agencies to help direct additional resources to the towns they serve. This article would result in an estimated 010 increase per 1,000 of assessed value to be raised by taxes.
Sorry, he's just getting late.
That's you, good. All right, I'm gonna find out more about it.
My name is Charlotte Scott. I'm the coordinator for the Southern Rockingham Coalition for Healthy Youth, AKA SOROC, because it's much shorter. We work with the towns of Atkinson, Danville, Hampstead, Kingston, Newton, Plastow, and Sandown. We have historically been funded by federal grants, so we have never had to approach our towns before. We have aged out of those federal grants, so we are, we have been seeking additional federal grants, but as someone stated earlier, they tend to go to larger areas with a more visible need. So the large federal grant we did apply for, that we hoped would sustain us this year, went to Plymouth. And we have also applied for some state and local funding. We have some both pending. But in the meantime, we figured it was time to get on as a warrant article in our towns. In fairness, we went on looking for $1 per person based on population. Just to give you an idea of who is at our table, we have police, mental health, public health, our schools, members of the community, the National Guard Counter Drug Task Force. So the money that we're seeking is really just for staffing, so we can bring everything together and connect all the services from the federal, state, and local level to make sure that our towns get every opportunity awarded to them. Some of the programs that we do is youth education, parent education. We have a support group for grandparents who are raising the children of their addicted children. We do resiliency programs for first responders. We work with the Austin 17 House on youth programs. We work with the public health networks to do things like senior citizens' prescription safety events. We work with all of our towns, we have eight towns, and so far, five of those eight towns have permanent medication drop boxes. We are working with the chief to finish the project of getting one here in Newton. So we do a lot of work with all of our communities, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and I have plenty of handouts for anyone that's interested.
All right, thank you. The way I see it, this particular service would actually, at some point, fall under Article 13.
I was wondering about that.
It is one of the newer services that has come to us for funding, and if successful, it would wind up being rolled into Article 13 with the rest of the community services, because it is that type of community service that the article is intended for.
And we have, we're not new to serving our community.
That's what I was gonna ask.
Asking for help, doing so.
Exactly.
And we have a lot of these kinds of services in town.
That's what I was gonna ask.
And quite honestly, a penny per thousand to help, to support these issues is miniscule.
Unfortunately, it's really needed.
All right, so do I have a motion?
Move to recommend.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? It's unanimous. And one more.
Oh, that's me.
That's you.
I get the last one.
All right, in our last article of the evening, people.
Before I read it, I thank everyone for sticking around this long.
Really?
Number 27. On a petition of 25 or more eligible voters of the town of Newton will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,000 to support a lake host program at the Newton Town Boat Ramp for the 2020 summer season. The lake host program is a collaborative effort between New Hampshire Department of Environmental Service, New Hampshire Lakes, and my local lake associations. It trains and employs individuals to provide courtesy boat inspections to prevent the spread of aquatic invasive plants such as milfoil from one lake to another, thereby protecting public lake uses such as swimming, fishing, and boating. This article would result in an estimated .002 increase per $1,000 of assessed value to be raised by the taxes.
Lake program person?
All right, so I'm not sure if people are aware of this. This is just basically a survey-type deal. There is just people at the boat ramps and access points to, say, Country Pond, to ask questions about where the boat is, where the boat... questions about where the boat is, where the boat's been, that sort of thing there, to get an idea of what type of things may occur in the Country Pond. No one is forced to talk to them, it is not required. It is a very, it's almost like when you go, no, it's even better than when you go to the transfer station in its election year.
We're also one of the few towns that does not have invasives in our pond, which is very rare, so there's an advantage to that. But wasn't this free last year?
Well, it was, it was done last year, and it was done with support of other groups in other towns, I believe, did similar things throughout the lakes in this area. It's everything Lisa said, and it's not punitive, so it's not like they're collecting, you know, boat numbers to report them to anybody. It's just trying to curb, educate to curb the spread of this stuff.
Exactly. And it, it's in, what's the right word? In conjunction with other cities and towns within the state and the DES, to really help educate people about the invasive species getting into different water bodies and what it can actually do to those water bodies. So educate and collect data, not counting, there is no data on license plates or names or, like you said, boat registrations. That does not get collected.
It, it should be noted that the cost is for a minimal, minimal payroll, because what they found is, if they just got straight volunteers, volunteers very often don't show up. So if they pay people a little bit of money to come out for three, four hours on a, on a summer day, they're more apt to commit to the time. So that's, that's what the money's about.
All right, anybody else have any questions, comments, concerns? This was done last year, by the way.
Yeah.
At Country Pond.
Jim Baker, Newton. I, I live on Country Pond, and I'm familiar with this lake association, and these people do a phenomenal job, volunteer, all volunteer work for the, for to keep the pond clean and try to keep track of water quality, and they're, they've developed a bunch of state programs that they're all doing, volunteer programs. But I just want to point out that anybody who lives on the pond pays an additional assessment of about two hundred dollars a foot of frontage, of waterfrontage. So you have your, your normal lot assessment, which everybody has, and you have your, your house and improvements assessment, but you also have an additional two hundred dollars. So if you have a hundred, a hundred feet, that's an additional twenty thousand dollar assessment on your taxes. So it would seem reasonable to give a little bit back of that, back of that to the quality of maintaining the quality of the pond.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, comments, input?
So just, just so I'm clear, if this doesn't pass, then there's no inspection anymore at our lake?
No, 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 that just means the town.
Right.
Does not fund it. It means the Lake Association would have to try to find the funding somewhere else if they wanted to continue to do it.
Serious.
Because it's not us looking for the money, it's the Lake Association looking for us to help them fund it.
Okay, I want to make sure I understood. Okay.
And like the last one, this could become one of the ongoing.
Services?
Service.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
No, he was just offering additional explanation.
No problem, I'll move to recommend.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? That's unanimous. And since we are done, I would like to thank everyone who is sitting here right now, and those that were here earlier and had to leave, for coming and participating in this public hearing. This is what we are all about. We are here to listen to you, we do represent you, and we do do our best to try to represent the majority, since we cannot represent the entirety. And with that, I would say we are adjourned at ten, ten, yes.
Back here, what is it, February 2nd?
First.
February 1st, 9:00 AM.
Correct.
The deliberative session.
It's tenfold.
Yes, bring your friends.
So, February 1st, 9:00 AM, Town Hall, deliberative session. This is when people can make recommendations for changes, word changes, amount changes, anything.